Thank you. All right. Good evening. I'd like to call the thirty-fourth meeting of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland to order six P M. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman DeWalt.
Here.
Councilman Cole.
Here.
Councilman Mitchell.
He's here. He's getting set up in the office over there.
Councilman Sidnor.
He's in the waiting room.
Here.
Madam Clerk, if you could add Councilman Mitchell, I think I T got him up.
Okay, Councilman Sidnor.
Here.
Councilman Mitchell. President.
Here.
Mayor Ma.
Right. The next agenda item is the report of the Mayor and City Council. And I will start with Councilman Mitchell.
You can hear me, okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Welcome, everybody. July fourteenth, I went to the Laurel Cats fundraiser at, oh wait, yeah, July fourteen Laurel Cats fundraiser at Mango Grill. July twelfth, Olive on Main fundraiser for Laurel Advocacy Referral Services. I got to attend official ribbon cutting after Adult Use Passing July one at Ascend Wellness. July fifteenth, I attended a U S T W cookout at Riverfront Park for Department of Public Works. And later that day, I was able to go to the Women's Club of Laurel on Main Street. They had an open house. Later that day, there was a salon and a barbershop on Main Street that was throwing a barbecue at the Laurel Boys and Girls Club Center, so I stopped by there. On the twenty-second of July, I went to More Than Java, had a taco truck outside. Tacos R Us, so I stopped by there. It was very well attended. And definitely appreciate More Than Java for putting on events like that. I think it was their second time doing a food truck. After that, I went to Life After Release. Life After Release is a nonprofit that helps returning citizens in the community and also helps, you know, free people who are incarcerated in which they give guidance. And so they had a grand reopening at Creative Suitland. And so I went there and it was very well attended. July twelfth or July twenty-third, I had the opportunity to go to Our Lutheran Savior Church right here in Laurel. And with that being said, I conclude my report. Thank you, President.
Thank you, Councilman Mitchell. Next, we'll have Councilman DeWalt.
Good evening, everybody. Today, I attended the Board of Elections Supervisors with their first meeting of the year. For us, it's the opening and preliminary review of twenty twenty-three general election candidate filings. And I just would like to recognize all their hard work, and it's just starting for them. John Kish, who is the chairman, William Wellford, Jackie Ricks, Rhonda Whitley, and Ralphina Clark. And for all their hard work, and there's going to be a lot of hard work ahead of them until the election on November seventh and even after that. And then I'd like to also recognize Sarah Green, who has, I didn't know she was the part of the Board of Elections Supervisor. She's got about ten different jobs now. So all the hard work that Sarah does, especially for the council and now for the Board of Elections and many, many other ones that she helps out. I'm anxiously awaiting the collective bargaining rights for the D P W and the change of the new labor code and eventually, hopefully, that the other city employees will get the same right to unionize if they so wish. I attended the Olive on Main, which was the Lars fundraiser. The next night, I attended Lido's, which is the Katz fundraiser. And both of them were really well attended and very enjoyable. I also went to the Montgomery County Rent Stabilization hearing. I was there a good portion of the morning and into the afternoon. And the rent stabilization in Montgomery County passed by a vote of seven to four. I also would like to recognize Will Jawando, who was one of the council members, who was the spearhead of this campaign for rent stabilization. He came to about five of our meetings in Laurel even before that. So he was learning, he was learning just like me and just like council member Mitchell on rent stabilization and the effects. And finally, he got it passed in Montgomery County. And congratulations to Will. The, on the eighteenth, I went to the Westview Terrace Home Owners Association meeting. They elected new representatives of Westview Terrace. We're hoping to get the garbage can dilemma fixed over there because there's about, there's about ninety or a hundred cans around their neighborhood in that small little complex, and we're hoping to get those fixed. And they have a good group there now that seems really conscientious and really want to get their neighborhood looking good. On the twentieth, I went to the Selborn House where I brought Brian Lee with me. And the first speaker to speak there at the seniors was Karen Lubinneke, who spoke about the history of everything around Fifth and Main. And she also covered the Saint Mark's United Methodist Church up in the Grove. And it was a fabulous presentation. The seniors all loved it. We learned so much from it that they're going to have a, they're going to have a tour down at the library or down at the museum for the seniors. And then I walked across the street to High Five where a lot of our police officers were having ice cream social, standing along the street and along the sidewalk. And I think it's a, it was a great, great event. They had a lot of participation, three ice creams to everybody. And I think it was the first time in my life that I actually saw cars actually not speeding stopping at the crosswalks because of all the policemen standing there. It was a great, great time. At that night, I then had my Public Safety and Transportation Union. And thanks for all the members who came because it was a very hot and humid. We did get some things accomplished at our meeting. And then Gregor Lee, which is every Friday, oh, I failed to mention the, on the twentieth, the farmer's market that I attended. Michelle has done an absolute fabulous job with that farmer's market. There's plenty of recyclable bags there. And also the seniors who have the snap cards can actually go there and there are signs up there. They have their own machine. She can actually take care of the seniors that have snap cards so that they can buy fresh fruits and vegetables. So it's every other Thursday. It starts at five o'clock. So please, please come to the farmer's market on those Thursdays. And then on Friday night, my regular place, every other Friday that I volunteer at American Legion Post sixty for people that play bingo. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman DeWalt. Next, we'll have Councilman Cole.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. I think we've all attended the Lars fundraiser at Olive on Main. I was there on the eleventh. On July sixteenth, I attended the Maryland Army National Guard six hundred and twenty-ninth Information Battalion's Family Day at Granville Gootie Park. Congratulations to all the award winners that day. On July eighteenth, I attended the Historic District Commission meeting. This past Saturday, the twenty-second, I participated in the Laurel Lions Club Crab fundraiser. And then because we don't have meetings in the month of August, I do have some upcoming events that I wanted to make everyone aware of. Tomorrow night, the Environmental Affairs Committee will be meeting in Riverfront Park off of Avondale Street. We will be there talking about ways that people can volunteer, whether it's handing out free bags or upcoming native plant events. On July thirtieth, from one to four, at Oliver's Old Town Tavern, Laurel Pride will be having a fundraiser. All proceeds, a portion of all proceeds will go to Laurel Pride. On August the tenth, the Environmental Affairs Committee will be hosting a native plant garden webinar at seven P M. If you email the Environmental Programs Manager, she'll be able to supply you with a Zoom login. And then finally, on August nineteenth, Laurel Pride will be sponsoring a drag bingo hosted at Oakland's Presbyterian Church. More details will be coming on that. Please watch the city's social media pages. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Cole. Councilman Sidnor.
Thank you, Mr. President. On July the sixteenth, I also attended the six hundred and twenty-nine Expeditionary Military Intelligence Battalion Military Family Day. As you know, I served in the military for twenty-four years, twelve active duty and twelve in reserves. And Family Day is very important because that's where you get your family to get to come out and see what the servicemembers do. And I showed their toys out of nature and also a way to, you need to recognize their family for their support. Because when a military person get deployed, the family got to take everything. And so there was big opportunity to do that. Also, on the sixteenth, that same day, the Overlook Townhouse Community had their first community day. H O A attended that as well. And I got three public services now so I want to make also, Mr. President. So just want to, heating and frost insulators, a lot of workers here, right here in Laurel, Local twenty-four, nine oh one Montgomery Street, they're looking for people to join their apprenticeship program. The application is taken on the first and third Monday of each month. It started at nine o'clock. There's a twenty-five dollar application fee. Once again, the heating and frost insulators, a lot of workers are looking for apprenticeship, join their program. You do not need a high school diploma nor a G D. They want to view a unions here in the area that do not require a high school diploma or G D, but you have to pass all the math tests and stuff like that. So that's, so the first and third Monday of each month, twenty-five dollar application fee. So if you're looking for a job or career, not a job but a career, please reach out to Local twenty-four right here on Montgomery Street. Also, since like August the thirtieth, the one hundred black men of Prince George County is having their annual blood drive right here in Laurel at Partnership Hall. There's August the thirtieth blood drive. So you want to come out, support the blood drives from one P M to six P M. And my last public service announcement, Mr. President and council and citizens. Starting this school year in Prince George County, for middle and high school students, you must have a clear backpack. So once again, middle school and high school students in Prince George County, this school year, when the students return back in August, you must have a clear backpack. So if you want to donate a backpack, you can contact Mount Luton Middle School, Dwight Eisenhower Middle School, Laurel High School, and C M I T High School. They must be clear backpacks. So if you're going to do any type of back to school drives, for those middle schools and high school students, once again, it has to be a clear backpack style initiative. That's clear my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Sidnor. I'll be brief for mine. This past weekend, I got to join Royal Chapel House where their family picnic day was well attended. It was wonderful being around them. I go there and worship with them. I call them basically family. I mean, everyone knows I love to attend churches and minister music myself. Had a great time. I thank Pastor Emmanuel and the family there for having me there and all the members for welcoming me and my friends that I brought and looking forward to the annual picnic they do. And that concludes my report. Onto Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Firstly, I offer condolences to the family and friends of Richard Blankenship. Richard was a former employee with around fourteen years service in the city of Laurel. He was in the Fire Marshals and Permit Services Office. Also, a past chief of the Laurel Fire Department and a Harrod County Fireman. He passed away suddenly and the funeral memorial service will be this Friday, the twenty-eighth, two to four and six to six to eight at the Laurel Volunteer Fire Department. And then on Saturday, the twenty-ninth, at the fire department as well will be the funeral service. Again, want to offer condolences to all those that work with Richard and family and friends. Also, to the family and friends of Nancy Birch, she was a member of the Ladies Auxiliary at the Fire Department and passed away. And we want to offer our condolences to the, to her family and to the service she provided to the city of Laurel and the community. I did have the opportunity to attend the Ascend ribbon cutting ceremony, new business here in Laurel. As well as on the fifteenth, the Bowie Bay Sox, they had the Laurel Community Night. I want to thank all those businesses that sponsored and good seeing a lot of people there from the Laurel area as well as members of our police department, actually all of our departments. But we had Officer Rexine who threw out the pit, one of the pitches, and he did a good job. So you can look at that online. He got it across to him plate. The next day, I did have the opportunity to attend the six twenty-nine Military Intelligence Battalion Annual Family Day event. They started this several years ago. They like the venue there. And we work with them on that and thank them for their service to our country and to the community of Laurel. They've been a great asset to, to the city, a police department with some of their vehicles that they worked on and others. And we were happy to do that, especially for being family, family oriented event. I did have the opportunity to attend the Overlook Home Owners Association picnic. Great opportunity to meet some of our new residents and a lot of good discussion. I appreciate the invitation from them to be with. Do want to remind those that might be interested to serve on a C A C. We do have some openings, but one in particular is one that the council passed last meeting, which is our community animal shelter. If you'd like some information on that, you can contact my office, but we are looking for individuals as well as the pedestrian and bicycle. C A C, we've got a couple interested in that that we'll be working with. If you go online, I want to ask any of the Laurel residents, there's a survey that's being taken. We're doing some internal work and looking at the needs of the community. It's pretty easy. If you go on there, you'll see where the survey is. Just a few questions I did at the, this afternoon, and the more residents that we get, the better. The information coming back to the mayor and council will be on things that you're looking for. The, I do want to thank the Laurel Police Department for their ice cream social. I again appreciate them continuing to reach out and again, work with the community. I think that's very important. At last, I did have an evening of wisdom and meditation over at, was invited by Sir Siri Siri Grin. Not even sure how to pronounce the name. I will mess it up so bad, but it was an opportunity to go over and learn. We thank you for the invitation. I went along with the city administrator last night. Couple of announcements, Mr. President, real quick. The, on August the first, from six to eight, it'll be Laurel Police Department's National Night Out at Grand View, Grand View Gootie Park. And on August the twenty-sixth, from two to five is our Community Cultural Day at McCullough Field. And we invite all the public that may be listening and others to these events. And we do have an proclamation for a national night out, which I won't read tonight, but we'll do that at the event. And that concludes my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next agenda item is agenda item number four, is General Public Hearing. And I'll open the public hearing at six twenty-one P M. Madam Clerk, is there anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, sir. I believe you have, the first one signed up is Kate, right?
Yes, I do have a list. Thank you. All right, and I'll go down this list. And please, as I call your name, you have three minutes. I don't want to have to interrupt anyone and cut your time short, so please just pay attention to the time. Three minutes. When I call your name, please state your name and your address for the record. All right, and first we have Catherine Wright.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good, good. All right. So my name is Kate Wright, and I live on First Baptist Lane. And I'd like to again discuss the Corridor Center. When I was a kid, we played a game, one of these things is not like the other. One of these things just doesn't belong. And I'd like to take a moment to invite you to play along. In the context of distances necessary to access the major road for which a mixed-use transportation zone was zoned, which does not play, or which does not belong? Camden College Park, zero feet with direct access to Route One. Greenbelt Station, zero feet, direct access to I ninety-five and the metro. West Side Ridge, right here in Laurel, seven hundred feet to Route two oh six. P G Plaza Mall, two hundred and sixty feet to Route four ten. The Corridor Center, six thousand six hundred feet through and past low-density residential communities, some of it on single-direction county roads, to access Route one ninety-eight. Round two. In the context of providing meaningful employment to area residents, producing economic benefit, and achieving the required non-residential second use, which does not belong? A bank, a restaurant, a department store, a grocery, a gas station, an individual in their pajamas remoting into their employer's computer network to work from home. And lastly, a simple true or false question. True or false? A person who owns a car, as ninety-two percent of Maryland households do, and who has a household income over six figures, which is necessary to afford the going rate for new construction here in the city of Laurel, will walk to any of the following locations? Twenty minutes to the nearest bus, thirty to the nearest retail, forty to the nearest grocer, or an hour to the nearest train? And honestly, would you walk those distances in this sort of weather? The land where the proposed Corridor Center sits frankly was incorrectly zoned. And as a result, what has appeared on Poltehome's concept drawings and their statement of justification is an abysmally poor fit for the location. The solution to second use, reliance on automobiles, lack of walkability, and a myriad of other problems is best resolved simply by correcting the zoning so a sensible development can be proposed instead. But seeing as I'm running out of time, discussing things like inadequate parkland or how to effectively address low-income housing, we'll have to wait for September in my next three minutes. So thank you again for your time and have an enjoyable summer vacation.
Thank you, Mrs. Wright. Next, we have John Berry. John Berry, are you there? All right, I will move on to the next person. We have Raymond Lee. Are you there? Okay, and I have.
Mr. President, I have to give them permission. Hold on one second.
Okay, I'll go back to John Berry.
Okay.
And please remember again, we have three minutes. Let's be respectful of the other speaker's time.
All right, now you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm John Berry from U F C W nineteen ninety-four. I'm, I'm speaking a little bit in response to an article in the Laurel Independent that came by a couple, about two weeks ago that we saw, and the headline was "Union Drive Sparks Accusations." And I just want to say we were a little puzzled by the title of the article and its focus. In it, it said, quote unquote, "These city officials are now trading accusations about events leading up to the vote." I want to clear the air a little and make things clear for everybody's benefit because I think this confused things a little. D P W has been a member organized unit from day one. They decided when to make their campaign public, and they told us when to make their campaign public, and they decided who to notify about it. If you have any problems with that, you tell that to them. We have been there to help them in their bid for recognition by the city. And as you all know, it's been a tough slog. They've attended council meetings, gathered petitions. If any council member feels left out of these discussions, they're free to attend meetings and forums. We just held one two weeks ago for mayoral candidates. You all have the opportunity now, if you're running for office, to show not only that you support the idea of unions, but you also have the chance now to show them what you can do and support. Because right now, it's pretty clear. They know the difference. Since July twelfth, I believe, they have had the right to bargain collectively according to the city charter. The only issue now in a hundred-degree weather, as they continue to provide the essential services to the city, is this. How can we all work together to give them the bargaining power that they have the right to to begin with? And when can they sit down at the table? We are all waiting to see you act and come up with a code. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Next, we have Raymond Lee. Are you there? Madam Clerk, is Raymond Lee on?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Absolutely. Okay, I echo the sentiments of my colleague, John Berry, but I also would like to add that this has been a long journey for the workers of D P W. One that started, I want to say, six to seven months ago. The enabling legislation was passed more than two months ago, and we still don't have an amended. The enabling legislation was passed more than two months ago, and we still don't have an amended labor code. It's a little frustrating for the workers, as they've done everything they could possibly do to have the right to organize and form a union. But it's beginning to seem that this is more politicized and about internal battles than it is about giving the workers what they rightfully deserve. Some of the things that UFCW Local nineteen ninety-four is looking for in an amended labor code is meaningful and pass resolution, one that includes a third-party neutral to reserve disputes. Also, we're hoping to see an amended labor code that allows for all the workers of Laurel City to have the right to organize and join a union. Justice delayed is justice denied. I think that this process has taken long enough. I don't know what it is that's causing you all to to, to, to take as much time as you've taken. But I do know this, the longer you take, the more frustrated the workers are becoming, and they're beginning to voice their frustrations to the public during an election year. And they've made it abundantly clear to us that they want to express their views to the voting public come this November and the upcoming months, on how this administration and this leadership and lack thereof has delayed their right to organize and join the union. And I'll say this, UFCW Local nineteen ninety-four prides itself in getting candidates elected and unelected. This past election in Montgomery County, we knocked on twenty-five thousand doors to get rid of council members who think that their interest is, is more important than the interest of the public and of the workforce. And we plan to do the same. We plan in the upcoming months to put as much shoe level on the ground, to educate the voters as to what this leadership has done and has not done for the workers and the residents of Laurel City. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lee. And next, we have Alejandro Miranda. Are you there? Madam Clerk, is Alejandro?
Yes. Yeah, sorry. Did I, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, just Alejandro Miranda from UFCW nineteen ninety-four. And just a follow-up on my colleagues too, is like the work I've been waiting for so long on this it passed the, the, the labor code. It's our understanding that was a fifty-day after the resolution passed. The, the, the how the code supposed to be given the right to the workers to sit down and start to negotiate the contract. I believe the union had been playing in a good faith with the city. We did have, we did not do much like pressure on the city more than the, that the worker they asked us to, to do. But I, I just seen like the city is no like Ray Lee was saying, is some political battles there that don't give the workers the right that they deserve. Like, John Berry said, if this worker had been a ninety-degree working, and they deserve to have the right to sit down and negotiate what, what they deserve best. And I don't know when, I mean, there is no timeframe. The, the, the city had not communicated with the union whether we are with the code. When is this code is going to be updated? And and it's our understanding that you now, in August, you're going to go on, on vacation, so it's, it's a little bit frustrated from the worker's side. We had a barbecue to celebrate with them in last July fifteenth, because we, we knew that we, we were close to get the resolution, but we we haven't get yet nothing. So it is, like I said, is, 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 we, we, we have been in a good faith with, with the city, working and we hope we can continue working in a good faith with the city. And also with the new, the new, the new council member who are going to come on this, winning on this election. We, we, we want to have, we want to work together. So, with the new mayor who came, also, we want to be working in a good faith. So but now you still have the possibility to update the code. And I think, as our understanding, the mayor sends some step. And we don't, we don't know where, where, where we are in those steps right now. So, I want to finish on there.
All right, thank you, Mr. Miranda. I have Margie McKenney, but you're speaking on item number eight. I guess you'll wait for that. You'll wait for that public hearing. And so, with that, I'll close the public hearing right now at six thirty-three PM. All right. Agenda item number five is consideration of fleet acquisition for purchase of a twenty-twenty-four Transit Passenger Van Department of Public Works. Director Lee, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Smith, Mayor Mo, and council members. As I reported out in the special session earlier, the Department of Public Works is requesting approval for the purchase of a twenty-twenty-four Transit Passenger Van, which will be assigned to Parks and Recreation's Program Transportation. The vehicle will replace a vehicle that succeeded its lifespan. The department solicited several quotes and on the open market, but due to the specialness of this van, we only had one quote that was returned, and that was from Academy Ford of Laurel, Maryland in the amount of forty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars. This vehicle will replace vehicle number seven fifty-nine, a two thousand and ten passenger van. Funding for the purchase of this vehicle is in the adopted FY twenty-twenty-four CIP. It is recommended that the person of this vehicle be approved in the amount of forty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars to Academy Ford of Laurel, Maryland. Thank you.
Right. Are there any questions or comments from the council before I move forward? All right, well, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve the bid recommendation for the twenty-twenty, or for the new fleet acquisition in the amount of four thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars from Academy Ford of Laurel, Maryland.
Right, can I get a second?
A second, Mr. President.
May I correct the amount, Mr. President?
Yes.
The actual amount is forty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars for the Ford Transit van.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Councilman Sidnor, and thank you, Council, Director Lee. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman Sidnor?
Yes.
Councilman DeWalt?
Just one comment. The, that was a great choice, Director Lee, although it was the only one. It's still that they're local, they're just stone's throw from the city, and I think it's an awesome choice. Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
President Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Right. Agenda item number six is the second public hearing with possible action on ordinance number two thousand fourteen. An ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland to repeal and replace Laurel City Code Chapter Seventeen, Traffic in Providing for an Effective Date. I've read the title into the record for the second reading. Chief Hamel, you have the floor.
Thank you, and good evening, President Smith, Mayor Mo, and esteemed city council members. Before you is ordinance number two thousand fourteen, as required by the City of Laurel Code, providing legislation to amend Laurel City Code, Chapter Seventeen, Traffic. This will repeal and replace the current Chapter Seventeen. This action is designed to update the city's traffic code to specifically address traffic and parking concerns more effectively, and to update language and provisions within the current code. This action is a result of a study of the code conducted by the Department of Public Works, the Department of the Fire, Marshal, and Permit Services, and the Police Department, working together in order to help make the city safe. This action will update traffic and parking regulations for the City of Laurel and allow for more effective traffic regulation and more effective parking enforcement throughout the city, thereby enhancing the overall safety of the community. Thank you for your time and effort for today, and I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Chief Hamel. Are there any questions or comments from the council before I move forward on this?
I got one question, please.
All right, one.
Chief, I finally read it. I got done with it, and so I read it again. Just one question on crosswalks. It says, within the crosswalk of parking in a crosswalk, does it also say within twenty feet of that crosswalk?
I, let me sure.
You could, you could text me it. You could text me it or call me.
I will text it to you because I want to be a hundred percent sure. I believe you are correct, but I want to be a hundred percent sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. DeWalt.
Thank you, Councilman DeWalt. Are there any other comments or questions from the council before I move to the general public hearing on this?
I just have one question.
Sure, Councilman Mitchell.
I know we had talked about it earlier. Is this the, the same legislation that would allow the speed cameras of residential areas?
The, there is a provision within this legislation allowing for speed cameras, yes.
Understood. Thank you. All right. Any other comments or questions from the council?
Mr. President, I did want to thank, they were able to answer all of my questions. I know I asked a lot of them, but I wanted to thank all the time they put into that.
Right. And any other comments or questions? Okay, well, I'll open the public hearing at six thirty-nine PM. Seeing that there's no one signed up to speak on this item, I'll close the public hearing at six thirty-nine PM, and I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we pass, the amendment by the chief.
All right. Thank you, Councilman DeWalt. Can I get a second?
Mr. President, I'll second the motion to approve ordinance number two thousand and fourteen.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Cole. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman DeWalt?
Yes.
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman Sidnor?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
President Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Mo?
I do want to make a couple of comments. I do want to thank Chief Hamel and Director Lee and Director Selby for all the work they put in this, along with their staffs. We felt that the best way to go make it clean was to, to repeal this and put in a whole new ordinance when we talked about parking. It's been quite some time since it's been done. And I do want the general public to be aware, there is things in there such as charging stations, electric charging stations, if you're not in that space to charge, there could be ramifications. Also, we have cleaned it up and enforced more on the parking of trucks in and around the city. And as well as speed camera, there was some changes there, and as Mr. DeWalt has said, there is some changes there with the, with the crosswalk and distances. A lot of that goes back to what this council did by providing funding. If you remember the Main Street discussion we had, a lot of those things can be incorporated and now incorporated into this legislation for the traffic and parking. So, Chief, and both Director Lee and Selby, I want to thank you all very much for the hard work and getting this done. And with that said, I'll concur.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, everybody.
Moving on to agenda item number seven is the second public hearing with possible action on ordinance number two thousand fifteen. An ordinance amending the general operating budget and capital improvement program of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland for the fiscal year July first, two thousand twenty-two, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, and to provide an effective date. I've read the title into the record for the second reading. Director Saylor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we discussed before, the overall change to the general operating budget would be nine million, a decrease of nine million five hundred and sixty-three thousand one hundred and fifty-eight. And in addition to the capital improvement program of nine hundred and thirty-five thousand five hundred and three dollars. The changes come from expenditure savings and additional revenue, which will provide an additional contribution to the pension fund. Also, an additional operating transfer to the CIP. It appropriates the internal transfers between the sections of Public Works and sections of Parks and Recreation for additional costs and utilities, disposal fees, and facility repairs, as well as the financial activities of the July Fourth Committee, the appropriation of insurance proceeds, and then again, our ARPA fund closeout for FY twenty-twenty-three. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Saylor. Are there any questions or comments from the council on this item? All right, well, then I'm going to open the public hearing at six forty-three PM, and seeing that I have no one signed up for this item, I'm going to close the public hearing at six forty-three PM. I'll entertain a motion from the council.
Mr. President, I move to adopt ordinance number two thousand and fifteen.
Thank you, Councilman Cole. Can I get a second?
A second, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Sidnor. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman Sidnor?
Yes.
Councilman DeWalt?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
President Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Mo?
Again, I want to thank Ms. Saylor and her staff, as well as all the department heads who helped save money and this year, and appreciate all their hard work, Michelle, for putting this together, and I'll concur.
Moving on to agenda item number eight, the second public hearing with possible action on Resolution Number seven dash two thousand twenty-three. A resolution of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland to pay tribute to the Honorable Joseph R. Robinson by renaming the Laurel Municipal Center as the Joseph R. Robinson Laurel Municipal Center. Mayor Mo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, we provided all the information. This is the first renaming that we had with our new policy. As I've said earlier, we followed that policy. I think it's worked well. And I also think it's important to remember, this isn't just about an elected official. Joe Robinson was the mayor, he was a council member, but he was an individual that went all over this state volunteering, doing many, many things for a lot of people throughout the city of Laurel and throughout the state of Maryland. You know, I traveled a lot of miles with, with Joe when he was involved heavily with the presidency of the Maryland State Firemen's Association, and I can tell you firsthand how respected he is throughout the state of Maryland. I think this is well-deserved. I appreciate the council coming on board with this and proving this, and as we move forward, we'll make sure we have a nice ceremony as we move forward with this second public hearing tonight. And I appreciate that and answer any questions that anybody may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we have any questions or comments from the council before we move forward on this? All right. I will open the public hearing at six forty-six PM, and we have one person signed up for that, and Margie McKenney, I hope I pronounced your name correctly. If you're there, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm Marjorie McSiney. That's okay. I think the municipal center should actually be named for Craig Mo. He is Laurel's longest-serving mayor by more than ten years. Twenty-one years is above and beyond what any other mayor served. He preceded his tenure as mayor with six terms on the city council. That is thirty-three years serving the city of Laurel. Joe Robinson served the city in many capacities, including one term on the city council and one term as mayor, and foremost with the Laurel Volunteer Fire Department, serving that institution for decades, beginning in nineteen fifty-one. He served in every operational capacity and was on the Board of Trustees for over thirty years. It would be fitting to name the Laurel Fire Station after him. I suggest naming the city municipal center after anyone be tabled until after the upcoming election. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. All right. And seeing that we have no one else signed up to speak, I will close the public hearing at six forty-seven PM. And I will leave the council, and I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we, uh. Uh, move forward with naming the Laurel Municipal Center, the, uh, Joseph Robinson.
Can I get a second?
Mister President, this legislation was sponsored in part by the mayor. I will second that motion.
Thank you, Councilman Cole. Uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman DeWalt? Councilman DeWalt?
Yes.
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman Sidnor?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
President Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Mo?
Uh, thank you very much for those kind comments. Uh, I think this is well-deserved and. Um, I do understand, um. That, um, some of the families on as well, and I want to acknowledge, um. Them as well as they provided me some of the information as we checked through. Uh, this application process, and I'll concur with that. Thank you, Mister President.
All right. Well, it's been a wonderful meeting, a lot done, and there being no further business to come before the man's city council meeting. This meeting is adjourned.